Welcome to the November 9, 2021 meeting of the Town of Victor Planning Board. We'll start as usual with the pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, for God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
I have some announcements before we start. Emergency exits are to your right and your left. It says right on the door, emergency exit. That's where they are. The restrooms are out through the main entrance door and to the left. Be sure to sign the attendance sheet at the back of the meeting room, even if you are a developer or are presenting an application. There are business cards at the back table next to the sign-in sheet to take with you with the email address and phone number for the planning department. Also on the back table is a copy of the resolutions that will be read tonight along with the agenda. And just a little caveat on the resolutions, we may or may not be reading all of them. Please turn off your cell phones or put them on silent. If you have to take a call, please take it out in the hallway. And also, if it goes for conversations, please take those out into the hallway so as not to disturb the meeting. We have, we have meeting minutes? No meeting minutes? Okay, we'll go on to the next, which is correspondence. We have something from Deidre Kirk with regards to Southgate Hills, Phase Two. She's expressed concern about a buffer on the property line and the weight on the driveway. And Mr. and Mrs. Baldwin with regard to Watson-Pole Barn. The boards and committees, who do we have here? Anybody? Nobody from town board? No? Okay. Any other committees? None? Hearing nothing? Go on to the next subject. Okay. Kim is not here tonight, so Lisa will tell us what's going to happen next time.
Your next meeting is December 14. You have a public hearing, Delta Sonic Car Wash, 7463 State Route 96. Applicant is requesting approval to demolish the existing buildings and to construct a 13,914 square foot interior detail building located along 96 and a 10,257 square foot exterior building car wash with a 3,185 square foot prep hut located behind the existing Taco Bell and also a 13,164 square foot indoor vacuum building and outdoor vacuum area. Public hearing number two, Isabel Atlantic, doing business as Verizon, 1533 State Route 444. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a monopole wireless telecommunication facility adjacent to the municipal water tank. And Bortle Parking Lot Expansion will be back on. Preliminary subdivision, 1086 Strong Road subdivision, 1086 Strong Road. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide 34.42 acre parcel into 11 single-family lots and a final subdivision, Scout Path on Aldridge Road. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide the 8.84 acre parcel into five building lots ranging in size from .813 acres to 5.09 acres and any carryovers from tonight.
Thank you. I will note here that the legal notice for the public hearings appeared in the Daily Messenger along with under-review signs being posted on the subject parcels. Postcards were mailed to property owners within a minimum of 500 feet from the location for the initial public hearing date of each application. For applications carried over, please refer to the Planning and Building Office. Our first item on the agenda is a discussion on a local law introduced for discussion regarding Chapter 211 to create a cannabis retail dispensary overlay zoning district. And we have here tonight Kevin Overton from the Harris Beach Law Firm. Do you want to start it or do you want to? Okay.
Ernie, I could maybe chime in a little bit.
Sure.
With my familiarity with where the town is at with this cannabis local law issue. So just shooting from the hip, my understanding is that there are two local laws that the town has the option of addressing or adopting. The town, or that New York State, my understanding is New York State gives the towns, the Town of Victor or any municipality, but in this instance, the Town of Victor, the opportunity to opt out of sales of marijuana until the date of December 31, 2021. Also, the town could choose to opt out of onsite consumption locations for marijuana. And what I understand the town has done to date so far is draft a local law to opt out of allowing the consumption of marijuana on, you know, retail premises. So the town would allow, in this instance, retail sales of marijuana in a certain geographic location of the town. And that geographic location includes the commercial zoning district that is north of the New York State thruway and exclusively within the Route 96-251 overlay corridor. So it's a very narrowly defined area. I can make, maybe what I could do is bring up the zoning map to show the board. So the town is choosing to allow for the sale of marijuana, but it is not allowing onsite consumption in business locations.
Opting out means no tax revenue?
No, the opting out means that, and maybe Kevin can detail that a little bit more, but opting out means that you're kind of opting out of the allowance.
Right, correct. The taxation is on the retail component of the law. So the town is not proposing, at least at this point, to opt out of the retail sales. They're opting out of the ability for a customer to consume the product at the retail location. But it's separate from the taxation component. The taxation component is based on the sale of marijuana.
But if the sale is not allowed, we're not going to have any tax revenues.
Correct, but the opting out isn't for not allowing the sale. It's not allowing the actual consumption in the retail establishment. The, there is a proposal to adopt a location for where marijuana can be sold within the town in the northerly part of the 96 corridor, but not for consumption in those same establishments.
Well, like a liquor store, right?
Correct. So instead of having it be almost like a bar where you can go buy alcohol and consume it there, it's more like a liquor store. You can go buy the alcohol, but you can't consume it in that same location. That's kind of a distinction.
So, and this is being brought up? Yeah, that'd be great. So this is something that the town board is heading up, right? We don't, here at the planning board, we don't have the ability to legislate. So it's something that the town board is addressing. And here's a copy of the town zoning map. There are multiple colors on here. And a lot of the light green is the residential area. The orange area is more of light industrial. And then the area that, where the town is contemplating allowing for the sales only is in this yellow area, north of the New York State thruway, in this commercial area, all of this, all of this yellow. With the exception of not in the planned development district, right? Those are these kind of spotty, yellow-orange areas on the fringe. So this would include like your, the location of the Old Navy Retail. I think the Home Depot is up over in this area. And this is High Point over in this area. So it would be include areas, including Eastview Mall, Cobblestone Court, where currently Hobby Lobby is located and formerly where Dick's Sporting Goods was located. So yeah, that general area. With the exception of, so there's, over here you'll see a couple of split parcels that actually front on Benson Road. This is just off of New York State Route 96. So it's north, I should say, north of the thruway ramp is where the retail sales would be allowed in the commercial district.
Am I correct that if the town says no at this point, it can say yes later? But the opposite's not true? If we say yes now, we can't rescind that later?
Yeah, that's correct. You have, yeah, the town board has the option to say no, right? No onsite consumption today.
Or no sales.
Or no sales, right. And at a later date, yes, they could opt in to allow for that. But the opposite is not true. After December 31, the municipality cannot opt out.
Okay. And do we know what the village is doing? In other, I don't know if it has a bearing, but you know, it'd be a shame if we said no to retail sales and the village becomes a hotspot for Ontario County marijuana sales.
I don't, I don't know the facts with the village. I've heard that maybe they're going to allow for the sales in a specific area in the village, but I really don't know for sure. I don't know the facts there. Thank you.
I don't, I don't know anything for certain either. I heard similar to what Wes heard, that they're going to allow retail sales or that's the way they're leaning in a particular section, but I haven't heard anything about consumption or anything beyond that.
Thank you.
And if they do opt out, they can opt back in within what time period?
So my understanding is they could opt in to allow for onsite consumption at any point?
If there's no time period, once you get past the December 31 date, there's no time period by which there's a requirement to opt back in. It's an opt back in at any time. And that would be opting in to allow for consumption.
Does the town board want something from us? This is just for information.
Well, it wouldn't hurt to provide them some feedback if you've got any. You are the planning board, so it might help with, you know, future legislation.
Okay. Al, you have any comment on that?
I guess given the ability to opt out now and opt in later, my personal recommendation would be to opt out at this point until we understood the longer-term implications of this in other communities.
Joe?
I would echo that in sentiment. If we were to opt in though, I don't know if I would want sales in my backyard if I were a resident. So thinking about Victor Commerce Park Crossing, that's right behind a series of residences there. So I think I would advise taking a few of the locations off of this overlay district. Otherwise, I think what Al said is certainly a prudent approach is see how it goes. And you can always opt in a year from now if they wanted to, so.
Or less, I guess.
Or less, yeah. So, but I'd rather not lose the opportunity by opting in, you know.
It's irrevocable in other directions.
Right, yeah. So if, once you opt in, you say, oh, wait a minute, too late. So that's what I had.
Okay, Scott?
I agree with those comments. I don't have anything further.
Joe?
If the town allows the retail sales and a landlord, for instance, the mall, says no, we don't want such an establishment, are they in any legal jeopardy?
I don't want to speak for the landlord, but conceptually, if the tenant came to them with a proposed use, they would have to have a justification for not allowing it. Now, with any other property owner, you can take a stand and say, I'm not going to allow X, Y, and Z, even though the town, it's a permitted use. And, you know, they would certainly have that right to do so. But it's up to the landlord. I mean, as far as any ongoing liability, it would depend on what the justification was and what the actions they took.
Thank you. I echo what the other members of the board have said. I think we should step back and take a look, see how other communities are managing this. And then with the opportunity to opt in, if it proves to be beneficial, I think then the pathway is clear for us.
About anything else on this subject? What is action is the town board anticipating? Not what they're going to do, but what is the options they're looking at?
I think at this town, at this time, the public hearing regarding this is still open, so they're still soliciting feedback from the public and from, obviously from this board and from the public at large. And then they'll take that and make a determination at a later date. I believe they've pushed the public hearing, the closing of the public hearing until the first meeting in December, if I'm not mistaken.
It's not very far away.
Ernie, I think Joe's comment observation is a good one, that is there a way for an owner of a mall or a strip plaza or a property allowed to personally opt out and not be legally under pressure? Is there a way to write the code if they did so to allow that?
So you were saying to modify the code to allow a landowner to make, it's not really up to the landowner to opt out or opt in. It's not, it's not, they don't have the authority. It's a municipal function. So the landowner can take a personal or can take a position as it relates to their property. It's their property. But as it relates to kind of the opting in and opting out, that is more of a municipal function. So, but I think you're saying, can we set something up in the code to, I don't want to say, provide an avenue for a landlord to say no? Is that what you're?
Yeah. And why wouldn't the landlord be able to say, no, I really don't want this on my property?
The landlord can do that. I don't think the town has to adopt a code to dictate or to allow them to do something or to not do something with their property. It's the same as the mall could not want a certain type of
Any kind of business.
Store to come into there, or they may not want to have a bar or a tattoo parlor. Even though it may be permitted under the code, it doesn't mean they have to allow that at that site. But that's a landowner determination. That shouldn't be the town kind of dictating and kind of giving guidance as to what an owner can or can't do.
No, I wasn't looking for guidance. I was looking for making sure that they had the ability to do that without being sued by someone who wanted to come in and put something in their establishment.
Just because, just because there is a zoning district that permits a type of use doesn't mean that every single landowner has to allow that type of use.
Okay.
That an individual landowner can make a determination that they're not going to allow this and that somebody would have to go to a different, different area. The concern from my perspective would be if the district, if the town was trying to, say you could only have it on this parcel and that landowner is not working, not willing to do it, it can't be a situation where it can only be here and nowhere else. And then that would be more problematic from the town's perspective, not from the landowner's perspective, but from the town's perspective.
So conceivably, we could opt in, but none of the landlords in the town would want it and it would still, just wouldn't have it in the town, correct?
Correct. It would be, but that would be, it would be permissible within the town and it would be up to those individual landowners to determine whether or not they wanted to allow the particular use.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
So the next town board meeting, they're going to take this up again?
I believe the public hearing is still open, so they're still available for comment.
And just to make it clear, we have no authority to do anything at this point. It's just a discussion matter. If you want to be heard, you should go to the next town board meeting and speak up. All right, that being the case, go to the public hearing. And I would remind everybody that speakers are requested to limit comments to three minutes. And if they go beyond that, they can be asked to conclude their comments at five minutes. First public hearing, which is still open, is Highline Park, 30 SP 2021, Main Street Fishers. The owner is Morel Builders. It's zoned PDD, tax map number 6.00-1-58.320. The applicant is requesting approval to construct 120 apartment-style and 26 townhome-style four-rant residential units with supporting clubhouse amenities and parking. Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, it's Jeff Morel with Morel Builders, and I can be relatively brief this evening. Following up from the last planning board meeting, we actually ended up in a process that basically had two independent site walks. We attempted to get our height raised up with a lull, but unfortunately due to very, very wet weather, thank you, we made the daily news in Victor and buried our equipment quite significantly. So fortunately, we ended up staking the site and were able to complete a site walk on Friday. We completed a second site walk on Monday and specifically tried to address in those site walks the staking positions of where the multi-story building was, as well as the staking positions of the cul-de-sac street to understand the proximity of the new homes to the adjoining to the immediate west. And I think Deb is here today, so we completed that on Monday. But in essence, it was a very positive site walk. We were able to demonstrate specifically in this position, and the staking remains if the planning board would like to visit that site. From its current elevation at grade, the position here was up 33 feet. So we were able to demonstrate that from a visibility perspective, both to the road here on County Road 42, as well as the east-west position, that that height differential would be nominal. And I think more importantly, the east-west distance was just more greatly understood during that site walk as far as ensuring that visual representation of the building and sightlines into, from one building into the residence immediately to the west, Ms. Hogan's home, would not really be a demonstratable impact. The other concern was we staked the cul-de-sac, making sure that this buffer is maintained. We're going to work with our engineers to make sure that our clearing limits behind the buildings are minimized to the greatest extent, just to make sure that any swills are implemented and that rest of that buffer is maintained in a mature setting and goes undisturbed. And then ultimately, I would be working with Ms. Hogan to plant any type of incremental trees, whether that was in her yard or on our property. And we basically agreed to do that in a post-construction state. So that, I think, all turned out to be a positive experience, even though the lull was a negative experience on Friday morning. And as I mentioned, because of the grading elevation differential here, there would be nearly no visibility of Building 2 from County Road 42. As I mentioned, we rise up to a high point that sits here and then it immediately drops down towards the rear to really subordinate the three buildings. And as I mentioned, the profile of those buildings, we're having as a building height of 40 feet 2 inches. We did also on Friday walk the site with Victor Hiking Trails and have agreed to put a blanket easement over the entire parcel so that, again, they have the ability to do connection anywhere on the property. And we talked about actually bringing that connection through our sidewalk network and down here ultimately to bring the trail network over to where Kettle Ridge is. Victor Hiking Trails is also currently working on bringing that trail network directly across the street because the Pinnacle Building is sitting immediately to our south here. So between the Friday site walk and the Monday site walk and the staking, it was so much better to actually be out in the field and understand distances and elevations than looking at a very small-scale, top-down rendering that this is. It was much more pertinent to actually be out and understanding the site dynamics. There were two other individuals that joined us on that site walk on Monday. The fire marshal, Fisher's Fire Marshal was with us as well as another resident, Mac Warner, who was a resident in this community. So all told, it was a positive experience and now we're really looking to complete this next stage of the process. And I'll be here for any particular questions for the board's pleasure.
Before we get off that subject, because we've got another one to cover as well.
Sure.
I was not able to make it because of my
Yes.
recovery from back surgery, but I think, Joe, did you? What's your take on it?
Thanks, Ernie. I thought it was a good day, Friday evening, to get a feel, like Jeff said, for the scale of distances, the heights of the trees versus the heights of the, certainly Building Number One, where they staked out the southernmost center line, I think it was, right?
Correct.
And so we didn't have the lull out there or a balloon of any sort.
By the way, could you explain what a lull is?
Sure.
L U L L?
It's L U L L, and it's a hydraulic lift that we had rented for a couple of days to raise to a basically as high as a 50-foot level. We only needed to go up 33 feet, but that equipment is very heavy. And as we tried to negotiate that on the site, it continued to sink. And so $3,000 later and multiple pieces of equipment to haul it out of there, we abandoned that effort midday Friday, as unfortunately all of Victor enjoyed as we were digging our way to China on the day. But so we removed that and, you know, in hindsight, knowing that we only needed to go up 33 feet from where our current grade was, I literally could have raised a basic balloon in that position. But what was noted on the site was in that position, 33 feet high, would not even be visible from any position on the site, let alone Main Street Fishers. So even driving by, you wouldn't have been able to see it because of the way the building is subordinated there. So my apologies for not getting the equipment there, but it wouldn't have served a particular purpose as far as trying to understand the dynamics from Main Street Fishers until you were actually standing there on the site. And I think that was the best representation, actually going and standing right where the staking is. And then you could see, okay, here's where the building height is going to be. And we could easily see a tree that was approximately 30 feet high. And I think most important, that visual from the street is not seen, but I think most importantly, the distance understood from the position of the building to the western property line, I think, was much more generous than anticipated. And that way, there's no concern about people staring into and disturbing people's privacy from residence to residence.
I'd also like to say that it was a lot easier to get a feeling of scale for the view shed, what you would call that, from Main Street Fishers because, as Jeff was describing it, the, it would be a pretty large cut. The only thing you could see from Main Street really is the community building and perhaps the backside of one of the residence buildings, 25 and 26, I think, if that. I don't know how low they're going to be, but otherwise, you can't see, you won't see the buildings, the large buildings. You won't see any of their houses. You have to actually enter the site to see those. So visually, I don't see that as an issue. We did walk all the way to the extremities on the west end, near Ms. Hogan's property, and looked across and could spot the same trees that we were standing underneath. we were standing underneath, right around building number one, surveyed stake that Jeff had done. And clearly, it was looking out horizontally. It was not looking at a towering site to those tree lines. And I think those trees are actually, at least one of them was taller than the building, 33 feet, that Jeff was saying was above the existing ground. So there's going to be an amazing amount of clearing of the property, that's for sure, to get it regraded properly. But I think that can be enhanced with, or, I don't know if I say mitigated by, you know, tree plantings and things like that. Did walk on the northwestern quadrant behind buildings at the cul-de-sac, and the maple trees were all going to be preserved. There are lines everywhere from the maple business that's over on the adjacent road. They still are going to rent them, I guess, right, Jeff?
They are, yeah. All of that's in protected open space, so the maple syrup, you know, tap harvesting will continue.
Yeah. So I was satisfied with, unfortunately, the attempts that Jeff made were a little costly, but in the end, we were able to get what we needed visually from landmarks right on the site. So I'll let Deb Hogan speak for herself, but I certainly was fine with what I saw.
I understand that Joe was the only one who was able to make it. Am I right?
Correct.
All right. We do have one other issue. And there was a comment about another traffic impact study. So we were in touch with our traffic consultant, and Wes, maybe you can let us know what that is.
Yeah. Initially, we were thinking that maybe we needed another traffic study, but upon further examination and after consultation with CPL, the Towns Traffic Consultant, we've determined that a new traffic study is not needed, and that the traffic study used in the creation of the planned development district itself is going to suffice just fine. We note that the traffic study that was previously submitted, I think it was 2019, as part of the PDD application, the rezoning, it projected, it utilized a build year of 2022, which we're not quite there yet, but I think the applicant still intends to maybe begin construction in 2022. So all values within the traffic impact study were projected out to 2022 and analyzed as such. That's a quote from CPL's memo dated from today. So there were several instances where the applicant utilized more conservative data or values in their analysis, which yielded worst-case scenario results. For example, there's a higher density used of 162 units, which is 10% higher than what is currently proposed. It also used the full build out of Fisher's Ridge for their study as well. And it had included intersections, intersection data that was updated from the 2016 data that was used for the former Conserve project. So we also wanted to note that the Institute of Transportation Engineers, New York State DOT, and many metropolitan planning organizations have not seen evidence that traffic volumes have returned to their pre-COVID-19 levels and are still lower generally than what they once were. So, and they've also seen evidence, I guess, of a phenomenon called peak spreading, where it's no, where instead of having a peak rush hour of traffic, that peak rush hour is kind of spread over several hours, maybe three hours. And due to these factors, and if the, you know, if we did require the applicant to prepare a new traffic information study with 2021 data that's been gathered, it would likely be less than what was utilized in their 2019 traffic information study, therefore resulting in the same conclusions that there would be no significant adverse impact to traffic as a result of this development. So there's a letter, or there's a memo from CPL that was received today, dated November 9th. So that's what we have as an update to traffic.
Any comments from the public in this project? That's you hiding behind the mask, Dave, right?
Me?
Dave.
David.
It's because you're hiding behind the mask. There you go. I thought that was you.
David Wright, 33, Ketchum Street, also chairman of Victor Hiking Trails. I did have the opportunity to walk the site on Friday afternoon. First thing, I was amazed at how far back from the road that the apartment building will be. And it actually goes down, I think it was seven feet from where the present grade is right now. So I felt confident that you wouldn't be able to see that from the road. And judging by the height of some of the trees around it, when I got back down to Main Street Fisher's, I couldn't see the tops of the trees, and they were more than 33 feet. So from that standpoint, I felt that anybody on Main Street Fisher's would not even know that there's apartment buildings there. The other opportunity we had was to walk the northwest corner of the property and make sure that the grading and everything will be suitable for hiking trails. And again, actually walking it gave me a lot of confidence that we will be successful in having a nice trail through there. I'm sure a lot of the residents that will be living there will use the trail. We do plan to talk to the adjoining landowners, Mr. Ray, and also Kettle Ridge, to get down to that point. And then if we build a little bridge across around the Quay Creek, we'll be able to get over to the Auburn Trail, which will make a nice loop trail. Going the other way, going south, I have to talk to the property owner of the Pinnacle Sports Complex. Standing up on the hill, it was very obvious that the Pinnacle Sports Complex would be used by the people that are going to be living in those developments there. So to me, it looked like a good fit from that standpoint as well.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this project?
Good evening. Deborah Hogan, 580 Sour Farms Drive. I really had not planned to speak tonight, but I did want to just thank Jeff for his walk with me on Monday, and my neighbors who were also with me, who were interested in the project. And it's going to be fine. So I'm happy, and we have a plan going forward of putting trees where we think they need to be. And the only request I made to Jeff is to please try to minimize the amount of trees. They take out closest to my property, which, as he said, he has to maintain that since he's going to be the owner and the renter. So he wants as small a space as possible to have to mow. So that was music to my ears. So, thank you, and good luck, and please don't make too much noise.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this project? It being the case, are we ready to close the public hearing? Ready to close it?
Yeah. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Scott seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
I have, public hearing is closed. Have you seen the memorandum on the traffic issue? You can have this.
I should have clarified that. My concern is not really the traffic out on the road. My concern is the backup that you're going to have within his complex.
That in there, doesn't she?
As one of, well, as one of my neighbors said to me as we were walking back, well, that's his problem, not yours. So I agree to an extent. I did tell Jeff I'm still concerned about that. I'm worried about anger, people getting frustrated, not being able to get out. I'm not worried about, once they get out, there's going to be too much traffic. So I don't know if that was addressed or not, but that was really the concern.
Well, you can have that.
Thank you.
You can do that tonight. Wes, are you going to do the revised part two tonight?
Well, I'm not sure that there's much to revise. I think basically, we did get a new piece of information, I think, from the last meeting, or maybe it was two meetings ago. We've got SHPO correspondence, and I've included that in the EAF for the record. And then the traffic information remains the same, given this new memorandum from CPL today. So I don't think there's a need to update or revise the Part II EAF.
Okay. Thank you. Is that all for this one, right?
Anything else to do?
So I have a draft Part III prepared, but we don't have any resolution to go beyond that. We haven't prepared a resolution for this project. Maybe what we could do is prepare that resolution for the next meeting, and then we can do the Part III and the resolution all at the same time.
Sounds good. Thanks, Wes. And the next item is 1086 Strong Road subdivision is tabled until the next meeting. Next one is South Gate Hills, Phase 2, East Victor Road. Public hearing is still open. The owner is BRW of Grease LLC. Next map, 28.04-1-48.000, Zoned Residential 2. Applicant is requesting approval to construct 15 lots on 10.14 acres under the clustering provisions, which will include all associated utilities and stormwater management. Approximately 3.99 acres will be placed in a conservation easement. This will be the second step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. The sketch plan was acknowledged complete August 10, 2021. Link?
Good evening. Link Sweetrock with BME Associates. With me tonight, as well as Jerry Watkins from BRW of Grease LLC. We're here tonight to continue our discussion and request preliminary subdivision approval for the project. At the last meeting, I sort of went through the whole nuts and bolts of everything. We got some homework that we needed to do, so we took comments from all the staff, the town engineer, as well as the planning board. Changes to the plan include, we've added that sidewalk that we discussed at the last meeting. We added the sidewalk on the entire drive along the south side to the cul-de-sac, and then we added the sidewalk to the north along East Victor Road from the site access drive all the way to South Gate 1. The, that was the request, and we reviewed it, we added it. We'll have to get into the final design of the sidewalk between the two sites when we get into the final subdivision plans. But the intent is, we added the notes to the plan, we showed the sidewalk on our, through our site, as well as to the north to make the connection that the planning board was looking for. Just to clarify a few things, that driveway along the north property line, that is not, or it's not a driveway, I'm sorry, that is access just for the pond for maintenance to meet the DEC requirements. It's just going to be a stone access drive, so that the pond can be maintained, meeting the DEC requirements. Couple other things, we provided written responses to all the LaBella comments, all the staff comments. The plans were revised to update all of the comments we'd received. The couple of loose items that are out there that we're hoping can be conditions of preliminary approval. We know we have to continue to work on the pump station, which, you know, Wes might be able to give a better update to the board on that, but we know we have to get that done before we ultimately, you know, final subdivision. And we had talked about maybe tying that into C of O's. We know we have to do that as part of the project as we go forward. And then the right-of-way adjustment, we know we're continuing to work with the town board on that right-of-way adjustment. We're planning on being at the next meeting to hopefully get that resolved, and maybe we can make that a condition of final, for the final subdivision approval. So I think with that, those were the big things that came out of the last meeting, and I'll keep it sort of short. And obviously, Jerry and I are here, we can answer any questions that the board has, so connect with that.
Board have anything? Joe, link back?
This is more for Wes. In the LaBella letter on October 26, you mentioned that this area is in, an area identified as a co-occurrence in the natural resources manual. And the intent of identifying co-occurrences was to focus attention on those natural resources that added value to the town of Victor that would need perhaps special care when development or whatever occurred. So I guess my question to Wes and you, as you all acknowledged that it's a co-occurrence, my question for Wes is, is LaBella satisfied that this plan addresses maybe some specific things we should be doing to protect the natural resources?
Yeah. That's a great question. So I did note in the letter that this project was adjacent to the co-occurrence area. So if there is a portion of this parcel that's in that co-occurrence area, it's a very small portion. So in likely, you know, the co-occurrence area, I don't know if I said exactly.
Probably.
Wetlands, woods, slopes, streams, and a floodplain. So there are some woods on the project parcel, you know, and those woods extend into that co-occurrence area. So I think, you know, based on at least the graphic rendering and also the limits of disturbance of the project described and depicted on the grading plan, you know, they've done what they can to help preserve, what do I want to say, the interconnectedness of that forest area. So they're not really doing any segmenting, they're not, you know, fracturing that woods, that pathway. So, you know, I think being that it's not completely within that co-occurrence area, but adjacent to, you know, I think they've done a nice, reasonable job.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Scott?
Hi, Link. I just had a couple of questions. Did I understand you correctly that there's going to be a sidewalk on the other side of the street connecting the two developments to one another? Is that right?
Yeah, the sidewalk, south side of this road, to our property line, and then continuing all the way to the sidewalk connection at South Gate 1.
So both will be, both subdivisions will be connected to one another?
Right. So that'll be, basically, that'll meet your talent, your desire to have that connection to the trail, ultimately. That's our intent.
Another question I had was on your site distance presentation and reply letter. Also, looking at your sheet number 13, which is kind of an overall, where you show a future development on the other side. It doesn't appear that you have the site distance right, the intersection site distance. And the future development that you show kind of creates an offset intersection where the new development would go presumably across the street. And it's, I guess this is my opinion, I think in these situations, it's good to get input from the towns consulting engineer with respect to traffic and whether this intersection is being created, and whether these site distances are acceptable. That's what I'd like to offer as a comment.
Okay. Can I just, I'll just.
If you'd like to reply to it, sure.
Sure. So, yeah, we provided, you know, I don't know if you probably saw the exhibit. We did.
Saw that, yeah.
Yeah. So we went out and looked at it. There's some shrub and some brush and things that were limiting us to the south. So our plan is to clear that, and we did more analysis. And then we also do have, we looked at it at the 50 mile an hour, which is five miles over the design speed, but there's 25 mile an hour warning signs for that bend as well. So, but if we cleared that, we're meeting the site distance requirements regarding that access drive across the way. We don't even know if that, if that, right now, we're just looking for the 15 lots. When we get into that, I hear your comment about that.
You have the other one located directly across from the entrance, which is, as you know, the right way to do it.
Yeah, and it's.
The other one kind of jumped out at me. I just think, you know, with the 25 mile an hour signs that you indicated, with the curve, with the site distance, I just think it's one of those things that I'd like to have the technical backup to say yes to your application. That's what I'd like to have, if we could get that.
And I think I gave, I think I gave that all the way. So I don't know if they've had a chance to look at it or not, but I, you know, we. at it or not, but, you know, we did more. I mean, right now, we're meeting the 50 mile an hour requirement, which is exceeding the...
Okay. According to your reply, you don't have the intersection site distance to the south, I don't think. I think you've got stopping site distance, but you don't have intersection site.
All right, we got, okay, yeah, we got the stopping site distance to the south.
So I'd just like to know if the town's okay with what you presented technically.
Okay.
I think the inclusion of the sidewalk is a nice enhancement to not only connect the neighborhoods, but then to the trail as well. So appreciate the adding of the sidewalk.
Okay, Joe?
It preempted my comment with that sidewalk. That definitely was a valuable asset and something that I think makes this a whole lot more connectable with whatever gets done along East Victor Road. And so I appreciate that you guys did that. The only other question I had was about drainage. And Wes pointed out that to get from the southeast to the northwest through the center of the site, you have put in a 30-inch pipe that takes the drainage that otherwise shows up as a wet zone through that whole area to cover that. So I don't have anything else to comment on. Thanks.
Thank you. He said there's something else you're going to present at the next meeting? Or did I understand that incorrectly?
At the next, well, for the town board.
For the town board?
We have to, for the right-of-way adjustment.
Oh. Melissa? Yeah, the right-of-way question to the town, is that going to hold us up?
So one of the things that we could do is, if the planning board is comfortable, I do have a draft of Part II of the EAF that we could go through. And yes, the right-of-way is going to have to occur to allow for final subdivision approval, right? So, and one of the things that we could also consider doing, if you were comfortable, is adding a condition to any approval that the town board provides that exchange, or that, you know, the exchange of the right-of-way. So, yeah, that's, I mean, that's something that the town board still has to address. It hasn't been completed as of yet, but if the planning board was comfortable, we can move forward with Part II of the EAF. But that's up to you.
I'll let you do it.
Yeah, okay. So maybe what I could do is bring it up on the large screen. Would that be all right? So, and just to, maybe just as an overall comment here, there's nothing that arose in this particular application or this project that I found in my evaluation to rise to a moderate or large impact, even though we might find some of these boxes checked as yes. Anything that's been checked as yes, I found to be no or small impact may occur. But we can run through those with you. So the impact on the land, proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. So yes, we know there's going to be some alteration to the site, right? But there's no indication that any of these other subcategories would trigger a moderate to large impact. So for example, the proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to the water table is less than three feet, no or small impact. The proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater. The proposed action may involve construction on lands where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface. The proposed action may involve excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material. The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. And the proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment of herbicides. And finally, the proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard area. That's obviously checked no, because we're not in a coastal erosion hazard area. So if there's any questions there, I'd be happy to, you know, dive into those, maybe in more specifics. We could jump onto the EAF Assistance website from New York State DEC, but we can jump onto the next question, too. Impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any unique or unusual landforms on the site, cliffs, dunes, minerals, fossils, and caves. And we've, just for your consideration, I've checked no here. There wasn't any indication, so no impact. Impacts on surface water. Yes, there could be some impacts to surface water. The proposed action may affect one or more wetlands or other surface waters. There is a stream not too far away, and then there's a kind of an intermittent channel that Joe talked about where there's going to be some piping installed. So the proposed action may create a new water body. You know, there is going to be a stormwater management facility there. Really, not a huge issue, no or small impact in that regard. B, the proposed action may result in increase or decrease of over 10% or more than a 10-acre increase or decrease in the surface area of any water body. It's going to be no impact. C, the proposed action may involve dredging of more than 100 cubic yards. We're not going to do any dredging. D, the proposed action may involve construction within or adjoining a freshwater or tidal wetland. Small impact in that regard, no or small impact. The proposed action may create turbidity in a water body. We're not going to be disturbing any water bodies. The proposed action may include construction of one or more intakes for withdrawal from water, from surface water. The proposed action may include construction of one or more outfalls for discharge of wastewater to a surface water. That's not going to happen here. The proposed action may cause soil erosion or otherwise create a source of stormwater discharge that may lead to siltation or other degradation of receiving water bodies. The project includes erosion control measures, so no to small impact. The proposed action may affect the water quality of any water bodies within or downstream of the site of the proposed action. We're anticipating no or small impact there. The proposed action may involve application of pesticides or herbicides in or around a water body, no or small impact. The proposed action may require the construction of new or expansion of existing wastewater treatment facilities. So I've checkmarked this as no or small impact. Even though we do have a pump station that is at capacity, there is a process by which applicants are charged, or at the time that building, I think it's, maybe it's the C of O or the building permit, there's a sewer connection fee. So that's been addressed. Impacts on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or an aquifer. So with a conservative approach, I've checked yes here. I think we could also maybe check no. But all of these subcategories I've listed as no or small impact. The proposed action may require new water supply wells. That's not going to be the case. Water supply demand from the proposed action may exceed safe and sustainable withdrawal capacity. That's not the case. The proposed action may allow or result in residential uses in areas without water and sewer services. The project will be provided with sewer, as they would construct the sanitary sewer there. The proposed action may include or require wastewater discharge to groundwater. No, that's not going to happen. The proposed action may result in the construction of water supply wells in locations where groundwater or is suspected to be contaminated. That's not the case. The proposed action may require the bulk storage of petroleum. That won't be the case. The proposed action may involve the commercial application of pesticides within 100 feet of a potable drinking water or pesticides within 100 feet of portable drinking water or irrigation sources. I've said no. And then other impacts, I've listed project will demand water from a public water supply and generate wastewater. Impact on flooding, vindicated no. The proposed action may result in development of land subject to flooding. So I've indicated no in there. Impacts on air, no impacts on state-regulated air emission sources. Impacts on plants and animals, yes. So the proposed action may result in loss of flora or fauna. So the proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any threatened or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government that use the site or are found on, over, or near the site. B, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any rare, threatened, or endangered species as listed by New York State or the federal government. The proposed action may cause reduction in population or loss of individuals of any species of special concern or conservation needs as listed by New York State or the federal government that uses the site or are found on, over, or near the site. D, the proposed action may result in a reduction or degradation of any habitat used by any species of special concern and conservation need as listed by New York State or the federal government. Those have all been indicated no or small impact. The proposed action may diminish the capacity of a registered national natural landmark to support the biological community it was established to protect. F, the proposed action may result in the removal of or ground disturbance in any portion of a designated significant natural community. The proposed action may substantially interfere with nesting, breeding, foraging, or overwintering habitat for the predominant species that occupy or use the project site. H, the proposed action requires a conversion of 10 or more acres of forest, grassland, or any other regionally or locally important habitat. So this is one of those questions that probably relates well to the natural resource inventory. But we're not getting into that level of 10 acres of forest, grassland, or, you know, of a locally important habitat. Proposed action, commercial industrial projects only, involves use of herbicides or pesticides. So this is a residential project, not commercial industrial, but I've checked no impact here regardless. Impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. I've indicated no. Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. Vindicated no. Impact on historic and archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to a historic or archaeological resource. The reason why I checked yes here is due to, oh, my map went away, I think. I don't know where the map went. So it's in a circle identified where there's potential archaeological significance. And it looks like Cultural Resource Information Service, if I can keep zooming in here. Here we go. There we go. So this is the project parcel here, right? South Gate Hills Two. You can see that this gray shading, that's identifying an archaeological, potential archaeological sensitive area. It looks like there's, this project has been submitted to the Chris system, South Gate Hills Two, new 15 single-family home residential development. The status is open. So I guess maybe you guys haven't heard back?
We've done the testing. We've submitted the report. We're waiting for the no-impact letter, and we're required to have that for the SWEP.
The SWEP, yeah.
It's in the process. And there's no, nothing, we haven't heard or seen anything that would indicate that there's, we found anything out there, so.
Okay. So that's basically what these questions are asking, and I've indicated no or small impact may occur in that regard. Impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. We've indicated no. Impact on critical environmental areas, we've indicated no. There are no state-designated critical environmental areas here in the Town of Victor. Impact on transportation, yes. While there will be some minimal impact to transportation, right, we know that there's a cumulative effect of development happening in the Town of Victor, and we do recognize that there are some concerns with regard to the East Victor Road intersection with Route 96 and also Bouton Hill Road. But this project alone will not be contributing or creating a significant adverse impact to traffic. Therefore, these questions have indicated no or small impact may occur. Impact on energy. While there is an impact on energy, all of these examples are no or small impact. Impact on noise, odor, and light. Yes, there's going to be an impact on noise. Generally, during the construction process, sound levels would return to ambient existing conditions after completion of the project. The project does include, I think I do recall there being some owner-controlled lights outside of the homes, like post lights, as part of the project, but that's going to be fairly minimal impact. Impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to newer existing sources of contaminants. Vindicated no. Consistency with the community plan. The proposed action is not consistent with the adopted land use plans. So generally, it is consistent, right? We've looked at the comprehensive plan in the past as part of, the town board looked at the comprehensive plan as well to adjust the residential overlay zoning here. So it's consistent with the plan. Consistency with community character, and the project proposed is inconsistent with the existing community character. We've said no. In general, it appears to be generally consistent with the surrounding neighborhoods. So that's where we are with Part II. I don't know if anybody's got any questions or comments. Happy to visit any of these.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the sewer issue, you said something about sewer connection fees before a C of O. I'm struggling to try to understand how that relates to the current situation with pump station operating at maximum capacity.
Yeah. That's a reasonable question, reasonable comment. So as part of, historically, what the town has done when there is a lack of capacity in the system is the town has often required that the developer that is last in, the last-in developer, to pay for the fees to upgrade a component of that system. Sometimes that is unfair, right? Because there are developers or projects that come into the town and take advantage and consume capacity. But because the system already had capacity, they weren't required to pay a connection fee, or they weren't required to pay any fees to upgrade the existing system. So oftentimes, it just, what the town had just relied on that last developer to pay for the upgrades. So what has happened now, the town board has adopted a fee schedule whereby new development, any new development that's connecting to the town's sanitary sewer system, is required to pay a connection fee. There's a residential, it's a scaled fee based on whether or not the property is already in the district or already being served. And there's also a separate commercial fee. So the point of that is to not hook the last developer on all of the costs for upgrading the system. For example, we have this situation right now where Pump Station Seven at the corner of 96 and East Victor Road doesn't have the capacity to accommodate the 15 residential lots here. So historically, the developer would have been required to pay for all of the upgrades so that they could, so that Pump Station Seven would accommodate their flows, and then some, right? Because I don't think the town would want to just upgrade the system to accommodate just 15 lots, right? They would want to make enough improvements to that pump station so as any other potential tributary parcels within the area could also connect and not have to redo that pump station again.
That sounds like a good way to do it. I just wonder, is our, is a potential approval premature with this issue pending?
So that's an outstanding question. That's an outstanding question. So what we've done, and I've drafted some language for potential resolution that I think would help address this. So what we've done is we've requested... So what we've done is we've requested updated pump runtimes from the town of Farmington, right? Because the last time we did our evaluation of the pump station was a couple of years ago, and based on old data, it's probably two or three years old now, we knew that the pump station was at capacity. So we wanted to reconfirm that and find out whether in fact there might be sufficient capacity to squeeze in 15 lots here. So we've requested new pump station runtimes from the town of Farmington. Data initially came in in late October but was incomplete. So as recently as yesterday, we received the complete data. And Mike Chaffron at LaBella is looking at that data to determine, number one, if there is sufficient capacity, if there would be with the existing station to accommodate flows for this project, and number two, to also evaluate the magnitude of improvements and whether or not full replacement of that pump station is going to be required for potential future tributary areas. The town went through and identified other parcels in that neighborhood that could be potential contributors in the future. So there's two methods here, two ideas that we're trying, two questions that we're trying to answer. And in any event, that pump station will be worked on, whether or not it gets just some minor upgrades to accommodate all those future tributary areas, or if it's going to require a complete replacement. We know improvements are going to be done to this pump station. One of the things that we could do is condition any potential approval on, you know, town engineers' findings in terms of, you know, written findings indicating that these 15 lots can be accommodated, or a town engineer's written memo indicating that the sanitary sewer pump station has been upgraded or has been replaced to a point where it can accommodate these lots. So that's just a potential condition that we've kind of identified in a draft resolution, if you're amenable to that. But, you know, you're right. I mean, generally, without that condition, I would not advise approval of the subdivision, right? I mean, how can you approve a subdivision if you know the sewer infrastructure cannot accommodate it?
I think that's kind of what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Wes, where does Blumont stand in terms of the capacity of that pump station?
Yep.
Is this overcapacity or capacity limit taking into account Blumont?
Yes. So the two most recent projects that were approved by the planning board that consumed all remaining capacity in that pump station were Blumont Rise and Victor Jeep, right? So after, so those evaluations, all the previous evaluations took into consideration all the development in that area, as well as the demand that was going to be placed as a result of the Blumont Rise and Victor Jeep.
So what were they required to do? I don't recall if there was anything other than extend the line.
Yeah, so.
I mean, that's what they needed to get their attention on the sewer system.
Right. So with the town's new policy that was adopted, and I think those applications might have been made before this policy was adopted, what they would have had to do is pay that connection fee, right? And those funds are used, you know, kind of in a pool. So for wherever in the town, or maybe there are geographic targeted areas for where these collection fees are provided, if there are sewer improvements needed, that capital can be used towards those improvements. So, but I think, so I think what happened here is in just the timing, I think the town realized, you know, well, we got to do something in terms of collecting sewer fees. Because right now, the sewer fees, any collection on sewer connection fees goes to Farmington for their purposes. And the town didn't maintain or hold any of those fees for themselves for their system.
I guess I think from a fundamental planning perspective, it's a little shaky, as I see it. You know, it seems to me if we were to grant them approval and they were to start construction with the caveat that, you know, they'll get some fees when everybody signs up, when they move into their houses. I don't think you want to be in a situation where people are moving into their houses looking for a fee and not having any sanitary sewer service. I don't think they're going to be distributing blue boxes throughout the subdivision. I just don't see that happening.
Yeah.
So I'm not to be facetious or anything, but it just strikes me as a planning fundamental, that's all.
So this evaluation that LaBella's doing will tell the sewer department what needs to be done to accommodate the additional development, or maybe both, future development, because there's other subdivisions coming in here that are going to tap into that, one much bigger than this up the road, to the northeast, I guess, behind, you know, that parcel. So how do we deal with that? I mean, obviously, they're going to have to look at those, and I mean, we don't even know what subdivisions could be tapped into. At some point, you got to be prudent and say, all right, well, we need to put a big expansion to cover all these other potential development elements.
You know what I'm going to do? I'm going to share with you.
I mean, I agree with Scott. I mean, we can't just approve this without knowing where it's going to go, and that something's going to be online, whether it's an interim something or a long-term something that will take on the capacity of things that are coming before the board.
Right.
Including this subdivision. I mean, if all it takes is a change in a pump size or something like that, and everything can be handled, and that's all that you need to do, then great, it gets done, we know it's going to get done, so you can move forward. But add another, I forget how many homes on the nearby subdivision, and pretty soon it's another pump.
I remember when Victor Jeep came in, we kind of started this discussion, and there was right on the wall, so to speak, that indicated that things weren't exactly real good there. But it seems to me we're sort of coming to a halting point here potentially.
Well, we went through the whole thing with Lehigh Crossing. There was like four or five pump stations that were all in line, and that was a big deal to get pumped systems, and that's why we have this spiral through the town now.
You know, and I don't know, I did take a look at the report that you guys did, but I don't know what the potential solution is. I don't know if it's a larger motor, or if it's a bigger tank, or bigger pipe, or what it is. But just trying to forecast the timetable for building a subdivision as they're proposing versus how long this issue may take. And I don't know, the timing doesn't look real good in my mind.
Yeah.
I guess we need that answer before we can vote on approval of the subdivision, correct?
You could. We could review a couple of these conditions and findings. I've got a finding, it might be worthwhile taking a look at those. Just as a graphic representation, you know, on this map, you see South Gate Hills 1 right here. This is South Gate Hills 2, the parcel we're considering right now on East Victor Road. And here's Pump Station 7 up here at the intersection. So the two projects that consumed the remaining capacity were this one, Victor Jeep, just north of Pump Station 7, and then Blumont Rise, right down here.
I mean, Victor Jeep couldn't have been a whole lot of, I mean, what did they contribute to the sewer system?
Yeah.
Or wash proposed in there, I think.
That's right.
Okay.
They'll be washing cars.
Yeah.
So we also looked at potential other parcels that could be tributary to PS7, right? So that includes this project here, potential for 85 units. This parcel, no project is proposed, but it is in the town sewer district, and that would allow for potential 18 units if the density was changed. So we looked at worst-case scenario, right? So remember, the comprehensive plan suggested potential density changes in certain areas. This was one of the parcels. That would provide for 18 units. And then this parcel here.
That had like 62 or something, didn't it, on Jack Diney's property?
68 units total. So, but 28 were placed here. So the remaining 40 units would be on this parcel here.
Is there any other development around that would tie into this pump station? Are we looking at it?
You're looking at it.
Okay.
You're looking at it right here. And, you know, potential four units here on the corner of East Victor Road and Bouton Hill Road, a potential for three units here. You know, one of these could maybe, these parcels here are unseptic.
They're not tied in yet, though, right?
Right, they're not tied in. And for the occasional, you know, one or two of these, or three or four decide to tie in, it's probably not going to be a huge issue. So these are the parcels that we're evaluating that are part of the calculation that Mike Chaffron is doing.
All right.
To determine what improvements need to be done here. So, but we're trying to find out whether these 15 units could maybe slide in and not necessarily go under the radar, but we don't have the answer to that question yet. So I just wanted to read this number 16 finding in this draft resolution, and then go over a potential condition with you. Number 16, the town engineer has previously advised that sanitary sewer pump station 7, PS7, located at the corner of East Victor Road and New York State Route 96, is at capacity with the approvals of Blumont Rise subdivision and Victor Jeep site plan. As it is believed that no remaining capacity exists for further development that would contribute additional flows to PS7, LaBella requested updated pump runtimes from the town of Farmington Water and Sewer Department to reevaluate and confirm previous findings using updated data. Although initial data was received on October 23, 2021, the data was incomplete and has been supplemented with additional data as recently as November 8, 2021. Further evaluation is underway to confirm previous findings and identify the magnitude of necessary improvements or replacement of the pump station. And then if we flip the page to a potential draft condition, it's one of the ongoing conditions, number three. I've indicated here that no building permit shall be issued for any structure until such time that at least one of the following is met, and that this condition also be made part of any potential final subdivision application resolution. A, that an updated sanitary sewer conveyance system evaluation is performed by the town engineer, including analysis of PS7, and the town engineer confirms in writing that the sanitary sewer conveyance system could accommodate anticipated flows for buildings where a building permit is being sought in the South Gate Hills 2 subdivision. Or B, that upon written confirmation from the town engineer, PS7, located at the corner of East Victor Road and New York State Route 96, has been upgraded or replaced and has the capacity for additional flows. So yes, it's not the cleanest.
Why would that be an ongoing condition? Why wouldn't that be a condition prior to signing?
It's a seeker item. It's an environmental impact. I mean, it's the same thing.
Well, are you saying that's why it's ongoing?
Well, no. I mean, I think you have to take a look at seeker first, and then an approval resolution second. I don't think you're out of the seeker yet. I think it's very similar to, you could consider it water. Let's say it's water instead of sewer, okay? Are you going to approve 15 lots for construction? They're going to want public water when your water purveyor, say MCWA, says, well, you know, we don't have enough water. You put it in an approval resolution? No, unfortunately, it's a seeker item, and it's an item on the box there that you check and say, yeah, there's a significant impact here because we don't have the sewer capacity.
Yeah. I mean, even conceptually, I can't imagine putting this as an ongoing, because you would want, before Link gets somebody out there with a bulldozer, you don't want to know that you can actually sell a house, and you can't sell it until this is done, and you have no idea what the timetable is on what this is, I would think.
Yeah, and I think it goes to the word planning.
Yeah. So part of the planning process.
Part of the planning board.
We need to find out from Wes's folks what the resolution is to the sewer system, and then we have to get a commitment on timing, and, and, and.
Okay.
So I don't see voting on it with this exception, honestly.
It's a pretty big one.
Yeah. Oh, my opinion, but to yours?
Yeah, that answers my question, I guess.
Okay, well, we've got to address that. Before we go on to the next, is there anybody here that's in the public to speak on this In that being the case, we're going to go to the next agenda item.
Can you close the public hearing? Or are you going to keep it open?
I don't know if we can do that.
I might suggest leaving the public hearing open. Closing the public hearing starts your clock on when you would need to take action on the subdivision.
I don't think you want to be in a position of us denying the application, so I would leave it open if I were you.
Leave it open.
Okay.
Can't hurt. All right. However, I should, did you get this link from Yudra Kirk?
I heard you reference it.
Yudra Kirk.
Did you get a copy of that correspondence?
A letter regarding some trees, I think.
Yeah, she wants a buffer.
The buffers are out.
Yeah, here you go. Okay, next item, Van Bordel parking lot expansion is tabled until the next meeting. Next is Bristol Garden Growing Greenhouses, 7432 State Route 96, zone commercial slash light industrial, 37 SP 2021. Owner is SAS RMS LLC, XMAC map 15.00-2-20.120. Applicant is requesting approval to construct four Westbrook greenhouses, 24 feet by 144 feet long and 14 feet high, and five Westbrook greenhouses, 24 feet by 120 feet long and 14 feet high for growing flower and vegetable plants.
Good evening, my name's Tom Santa. I'm here for Bristol's Garden Center. We're hoping to build some greenhouses for control of the quality of our plants and our supply. I got a letter from LaBella yesterday morning, and so it's not complete. I called the engineers at BME, and we're going to start working on getting you a new site plan because there's some things that Wes had wanted on the plan that are not on the plan. But there was a couple of things that he wanted me to, and same with Keith from the town of Victor, who wanted me to address, was the amount of water, of extra water, and how it would be handled. So the proposed square foot area of the property is 28,224 square feet. But when you put a roof on, it's not flat, it's a peaked roof, so there's a little extra area. We're going to have about 3,528 extra square feet that we need to address for water management. If you get an inch of rain, that's going to be 294 extra cubic feet, which comes to be about 2,100 gallons of water, and that's on one inch of rain. Our pond is approximately 55 feet by 40 feet, and we have about 21 inches of room in the pond, which equates to about 28,800 gallons. And that would be if the discharge pipe didn't work. Because the discharge pipe starts working when we have 16 inches of pond level left. So as soon as it gets to that level, then the water starts to discharge into the system that it's been made for. So we would have, even if you had four inches, if we had four inches of rain on October 26th, and that would equate to approximately 1,200 cubic feet or like 8,400 gallons of water, there's still 28,800 gallons of water of rooms still in that retention pond. And there's actually more, because when it gets to that certain level, like I said, it starts to drain out. It would only be that if it was clogged. I do have a picture of the pond, if I can present that to you. Would that be okay? I know I sent one to Keith.
Screen, if you want to.
This is a photo.
It's a photo?
Yeah.
Yeah. The features that are left in the pond as of today. Um, Wes, you were right, I went back down into that drop inlet, and it is a twelve-inch pipe, not an eighteen-inch pipe. I didn't get down deep enough the first time, and I kind of guesstimated that it was eighteen-inch going out, but you're correct, it's a twelve-inch pipe. Um, I did have a question for you guys, because you know better than I do, but if I was gonna, I was planning on taking the gutters and putting them into a pipe and then putting it right into the drop inlet, but we could also put the gutters down onto the gravel parking lot and have them come out there and then have it slowly go into the drop inlet if that was something that you guys thought was better for drainage. So, I mean, that's another option. It would go into the system at a slower rate if, I think if you.
It's really flat there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's got, it's, it's got a slight taper. It, it's got a slight taper from, uh, from the west side of the property or the north side of the property to the south side of the property. There's a very slight taper. Um, because that drop inlet has been there since we moved in, and it was kind of graded that way for that back parking area for all the water to kind of just drain that way. Um, and so for the other items, um, there was a little misunderstanding on, with, uh, BME, and it was my fault. Um, I had told him on the plan to put, uh, fourteen parking spaces that we had told the thirsty turtle that if they needed them, they could use them. And if you were to look at the property map on the right side, where the parking spaces are, it says propose fourteen new parking spaces, but he didn't put it on our property. He put it on their property. So we're going to redraw that for you too, okay? So that was my fault, that was a miscommunication. I told him what to do, but he didn't understand it was supposed to be on our property. And then the other thing is, um, that first house closest to the thirsty turtle, it, we have it out there at twenty-four feet wide. If you guys think you need more space, another four feet, the next size house down is a twenty-foot, so we could put a twenty-foot wide house there and then go twenty-four closer to the building, if you guys thought you wanted more room.
When you're referring to a house, you mean greenhouse?
Greenhouse. The one closest to the thirsty turtle is a twenty-four-foot house, um, but if you felt that, because there's nine feet from the thirsty turtle parking lot to our property line, and then there's thirteen feet from the property line to the first greenhouse, but if you needed like seventeen feet, we could give you four more feet by making that house a little smaller, if that's what you guys felt was needed.
Where would the parking spaces be relocated to?
They're going to be located, if they needed, and they would be located within a foot of the greenhouses, because that fence would go away and that area would become gravel, because most of it's gravel now, but there's some sod there on the thirsty turtle side, and that would be, they would have to convert that into gravel if they needed.
Would they be just shifted over the line?
Yes.
How would you get to them if there's already parking spaces?
They would have to realign that, that, that back side. They would have to change their parking plan, um, to, to accommodate, whether they moved the center ones in more and made some more room, but that would give them fourteen more spaces.
Because they just took away a bunch of them, I'm, I'm sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, they did.
That deck that they, you know, they widened.
Correct.
So I, I'm trying to figure out where you would access fourteen more spaces without being in the area that they originally envisioned, which is where you used to store all the constructions.
Well, that area'd be gone, right?
Yeah.
I mean, that would be, that's where they would be. All that material's leaving, we're selling it off, all the equipment we're selling.
Okay, I guess I'll be interested to see how that gets laid out, so.
Yeah. Um, there was another item that Wes had brought up, which I've also, uh, addressed with, um, Greg Tross from the DOT, and that is that driveway that we have on Route ninety-six that, um, we've put straw bales on it, and I, I sent pictures to Greg, you know, this June, and Keith as well, that we've been using straw bales to cover that gate, and we keep as much sediment out as we can, and when there is a little sediment that gets in the driveway there, we just bring out our, our broom and we sweep it out and we clean it out. And we pay attention to it, you know, because we know they don't want that material on their lot or on their road. So, uh, we do, we do watch that, and we do keep an eye on that, and we do clean it. Uh, probably every month at the, you know, it's not that bad, but maybe every month we go out there and sweep it up when we see that it needs to be done. Um, I think that's all I have, because that was the measurements that, um, besides the new drawings I have to get you. So that'll have to be at another meeting. So if you guys have any questions for me.
Just to advise you, we only have one meeting in December.
I know. The fourteenth. So I have to wish for a Christmas miracle if BME gets me, gets me the site plan as soon as they can. If not, we're going into January.
Right. Anybody from the board have anything else? And we will look forward to your revised plan.
Could I just ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, sure, Scott.
Well, one question is for Wes regarding the building, um, side setback, I think he was speaking about. Is, is the proposal zoning compliant in terms of side setbacks and area coverage and all that stuff?
Um, yeah, yeah. What I, is this on? I think it is. So what I understand, the side setback requirement for the commercial zoning district, um, is, is five feet.
That's correct.
So, uh, there's currently depicted thirteen feet, so that would appear to meet the side setback requirement.
And, and then regarding the, um, information provided on the drainage.
Yeah.
I think you said that you had an engineer who was working on that.
Yeah, we have, BME's going to be coming out to, um, to, to assess all that. I mean, that was the thing, when we bought that property, the front area, that's about fifteen thousand square feet, was that there was some parking and there was grass. And what we've done to it is we have made it, made it a sponge. We have twelve to fifteen inches of mulch all in that area, we have our evergreen trees out there that are covered up, so when it rains, it doesn't run off, it just soaks in, and then it slowly will move after a couple of days.
Well, I presume your engineer will do a stormwater report?
I, I hope so. That's what I'm looking at, having him do, having him do all the areas, because there were some other asphalt areas that had been taken out as well, so there's not going to be as much runoff as.
Okay.
You know, we would think.
All I have.
Okay? Christmas miracle, right? Well, look, thanks. Thanks for being here.
Okay, our next item is Wendy's Minor Subdivision. The seventy-four, seventy-three, State Route ninety-six, Zone Commercial, zero-four MS twenty-twenty-one. Owner is FX Net Lease Holdings LLC. Tax map six point zero zero dash one dash six-two point zero zero. Applicant is requesting approval to subdivide five point six-nine acres into two lots, which would include where Wendy's Restaurant currently exists. Uh, RB one would consist of plus or minus one point seven-six acres and existing restaurant. Uh, RB two would consist of plus or minus three point eight-seven acres. And there's a staff comment, we're waiting for the county. Okay.
Good evening, uh, my name is Peter Vares with BME Associates, appearing tonight on behalf of the property owner and the applicant, FX Net Leasing Holdings LLC. As you mentioned, we are appearing this evening to request, um, a minor subdivision approval for a property located at seventy-four, seventy-three, State Route ninety-six, the Wendy's parcel. Uh, the property does consist of five point seven acres, the property is Zone C Commercial, and it does contain an existing Wendy's Restaurant. It's actually a very simple proposal that we bring to you this evening. Uh, what the property owner is looking to do is, uh, take this five point, uh, seven-acre parcel and subdivide it into two lots. Uh, as shown on the aerial photo you see there, the two lots are, uh, demarcated by the red line that kind of encompasses the existing Wendy's Restaurant and its parking. That would be known as Lot RB one and would be approximately one point eight acres, and then the remaining lands, which would be Lot RB two, would consist of the remaining three point nine acres, the remaining land. It's important to understand there is no development, no improvements, uh, being proposed as this. This is simply being a, a subdivision, uh, application, being to separate out the Wendy's Restaurant onto its own parcel. Um, and that is the purpose of the application. Uh, we did receive the La Bella comments, which I'm sure you have seen, uh, contain two comments, uh, one being about the easements that will be required, and that the map, the subdivision map prepared, does illustrate those cross easements and the fact that Wendy's will still have the right of access to its existing Route ninety-six access point and out to its Main Street Fishers access point, and also have access to the stormwater management facility that's located up along the Main Street Fishers frontage. Uh, and then their other comment was a labeling clarification, which we will take care of. You also received a memo from the Code Enforcement Office dated October twenty-first, uh, about the setback on Lot RB two, whether it was represented correctly. We offered, uh, clarification in a letter to you dated yesterday, uh, November eighth, that actually clarified that matter in the fact that the lot being considered for subdivision, the two lots being created, it actually is not a corner lot by definition, it is actually a through lot by definition, and as such, uh, in the code in section two-eleven dash twelve B, rear yard, at, which is the definition of rear yards, it says, "In the case of through lots, there will be no rear yards, but only front and side yards." And thus, that is how that plan was created, was in compliance with that definition of the code. So we hope, uh, hope that clarifies that matter, and I know there has been some discussions between the applicant's attorney, uh, and Wes about that. Uh, this is an unlisted action under seeker, we did provide you the short form EAF part one. Uh, we don't believe there's any potential impact as a result of this proposed action because, again, there is no, uh, proposed disturbance, no site plan, uh, or site improvements proposed or required. This simply is a subdivision of, of property. Uh, as you mentioned at the very end of your introduction, uh, Mr. Chairman, about staff comment of waiting for the county, we would like to point out that we do not believe county planning board review is required for this application. Ontario County, um, has exempt referrals. Uh, basically, uh, what they state is via intermunicipal agreement, the Ontario County Planning Department has created a list of referrals that are exempt from review by the county planning board. And it's a list, I think, of thirteen items. Item number eleven on that list is subdivision of land into two lots that meet all applicable local municipal code requirements. Point being is, that is the application before you this evening, which is a two-lot subdivision that does meet all code requirements. So thus, by the county's own admission, they do not have jurisdiction or need to refer this application, or review this application and provide a referral. So what we would hope is that based on that, uh, the minor comments that have been received to date, I'm, I'm going to say the simplicity of the application, that we could move ahead with the minor subdivision approval this evening.
Well, it might be possible if we had a resolution before us, which we don't. We're going to have to wait till the next meeting. Uh, but let's go to questions, uh, Scott, anything?
I just have a quick question, uh, Peter. Is the lot wholly zoning compliant then in terms of percent coverage, for example?
Yeah, the, the lot that would be created for Wendy's?
Yeah.
Yes, it is, and the subdivision plan we prepared, we provided all of that notation to show compliance, uh, with, uh, the green space requirement, lot cover, maximum building lot coverage, uh, all of that.
Okay.
Yeah, let me see.
See.
Yeah, if you, I don't know if you have the subdivision plan in front of you.
I do have it, I've got maximum building.
Note, note number four on there.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're saying, um, I don't know, should we look at green space then?
Sure.
So green space thirty-five, and you're providing thirty-six, six point three.
That would be if the land bank parking that's approved on that lot were to be installed. Under its current condition, it would be the thirty-nine point five percent number.
Okay, well, I, I judge it to be close, and I think I was within a few percent then. So, yeah. It looks like you're subdividing off, you know, that lot, which I understand, which contains a lot of impervious area.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, that's okay, I understand.
And the fact is, is the stormwater management facility is in place for all of that.
Right.
Yes.
More questions?
I, I have no comments. Go ahead.
Uh, when we originally did this subdivision for Wendy's, Peter, I questioned why the driveway was so close to the front of the lot rather than having it back. And I understand that there's a car wash coming into this site behind yours, and that will have nothing to do with this lot, is that true?
That is correct. That's my understanding, as it's been, the, the applicant, the property owner, has, so the purpose is to subdivide the Wendy's parcel off.
It just seemed kind of odd to have driveway piece with very little connection space even removed from the Wendy's lot, because they're the only ones that, that use that access, at least in its current form, I think. Um, how do you get from the back parcel to that front parcel without going through Wendy's lot unless that's what they do?
Well, just, there'll be a reciprocal easement agreement between the two lots, because just Wendy's needs the benefit of that reciprocal easement also, so that they can get access out to Main Street Fishers and out to Route ninety-six. So it'll be, uh, you know, there's, again, for today, there's no proposed changes to any of that circulation pattern, but it would be a reciprocal easement.
It just seemed kind of circuitous, the way that it's running through that Wendy's lot instead of along the back property line, the hundred and seventy-seven point nine-eight foot long piece there.
And who's to say that doesn't happen depending whatever happens with those remaining parcels?
Yeah, because that easement up there, I gave me this handy little boy. Um, that would preclude, I would assume, building anything in that area, correct?
I can't answer that question without, because there's just, there's no plan for it.
I just find this an odd subdivision. I'm not against it or anything like that, it's just, these things raise questions because I've been on the board so long, I just know what's happened before. And I, it, I can understand this, and I can understand if you had this driveway through here just going to the back and giving you a lot more, uh, distance to Route ninety-six, the exit, instead of having these come out here, and then you're going to have all this traffic coming in for a delta sonic car wash, basically.
I'm not aware of the, the car wash application, so.
Okay, well, anyway.
You are now.
Now I am, right.
This will be in front of us, and, um, so I'm just trying to take into account what you're asking with what I understand is coming before us in terms of planning.
Mm-hmm.
For this application, so. It, it just, you're obviously separating it out for something, you just don't know what yet, basically, or they want to have some more control over it?
Well.
Maybe not everybody say what it is.
In my mind, I'm probably saying, "Don't go here," but I'm going to go here. And what I mean by that is history.
Yeah.
Uh, and actually, in two thousand and fifteen, this property was before this board, and it was a proposed three-lot subdivision.
Absolutely.
Because it was the Wendy's parcel exactly as it's shown now, and then it was this piece, and then that front piece that you talked about. That was, those were going to be two separate lots. The reality of it was, was what they realized, if that front piece by itself was pretty much not of much value.
And.
Because of, of the restrictions, so, again, and back then, that was still all about getting Wendy's on its own lot.
That's, and I, I totally get that.
And so, and now in twenty-twenty-one, there's the desire to do that again, but learning, okay, let's just do what we need to do, which is get Wendy's on its lot. We'll leave three point seven acres, and it is what it is, and we'll see what happens in the future.
I, I guess, I still don't understand why the driveway's way up here and why this is, needs to be put there if there's nothing you can do on that piece of the parcel.
Well, you know, it, it depends what you do on the other piece. Do you use it for parking? Do you use it for green space requirement? Do you, you know?
Is this for parking, you mean, right here?
It could be.
Okay.
Again, without, there's no plan for it. I can't answer a question I don't know the answer to.
Okay, fair enough. Um, I'll leave it alone.
I mean, I wish.
We'll see it eventually, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I got, I'm sorry, burning questionary.
No, no questions. Okay, thanks.
So, no chance?
Not tonight, no.
Okay. And, and the only reason why, and I, I spoke, I, I would, the only reason we, we make the request, because one of the main purposes for the subdivision for the Wendy's is, from a financing standpoint, the owner is very anxious as it relates to interest rates and whatnot. A month can cost money.
Yeah. Well, it's the rare case where we have an approval the first time you come before us.
I've done this long enough to know that also.
But you've answered all our questions.
And I would be remiss not to ask. That's, you know.
They're huddling, Peter.
All right, I'm just advised that Wes might be able to hack together a resolution.
Okay.
Willing to wait till the end of the meeting.
Yes, I would do that. All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody from the public have any questions or comments about this application? Being the case.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Good. Have motion to close public hearing.
Second up.
Second, call in favor.
Hi.
Public hearing is closed. Next is a Pet Pride addition. 7731 State Route 251. Owner is Pet Pride of N Y N I N C. Tax map 15.01-1-60.100. 38 S P 2021 and 09 S U 2021. Zoned residential two. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a 3100 square foot addition to the existing facility. Proposed work will include the construction of additional parking and an emergency vehicle turnaround. And then also a commentary awaiting for county comments.
Oh, good evening. I'm Jeff Ashly with Mosene Architects. I'm here tonight with Marley Sullivan of Pet Pride of New York and Greg McMahon of McMahon and the Rural Associates. As you mentioned, Chairman, we're here tonight seeking approval for proposed new 3100 plus square foot addition to the existing cat sanctuary at 7731. Victor Menden wrote. As you can see on the, on the board here and as well here, the proposed new structure is very similar to the existing that's currently on site. We're now proposing, we're proposing similar materials. Approximate building height of about 17 feet, just shy of 17 feet. So a single story addition. We received comments from the fire marshal, from the code enforcement office, from Lobella. We've responded to everything except the recent comments we received this afternoon from Lobella. And we can address some of those here tonight if you'd like. In addition to the proposed new structure, we are expanding the parking lot. We're providing an emergency vehicle turnaround as well as some new access sidewalk to the new structure. One thing I wanted to point out was there was, there was a comment in one of the notes that talked about site lighting. We are proposing to keep the existing site poles and lighting as is. We're going to provide some new wayfinding, low 42 inch bollards close to the building, which will not impact any of the neighboring properties. So again, I know you've seen all the application and materials and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Is there a dissent? Al, anything?
No, I do not understand. No, I have no problem with this application. It's.
I guess based on what you just said, are the existing lights present on the site, are they dark sky compliant?
I do not believe so. They're the older, very older style. We've had a hard time trying to find them to replace them. But again, we've reached out to our neighboring property owners and they have no issues with them and we're not proposing to change them out. So we can keep as is at this point.
But you're putting additional lighting?
We're only, we're putting in four new 42 inch bollards close to the building. And we're a thousand, just under 1,000 feet back from the road. So quite a ways back.
I don't have any more questions.
Joe, Logan.
There are two 10 by 14 foot cattios? I'm not familiar with that. I get the idea. What are they going to be, a concrete pad or?
Right now, we, there's, I think there's three. There's three right now. They're outdoor caged, you know, rectangles essentially. And the ones that we're proposing, I don't think they're not on concrete pads right now. They're just on the grass itself. And those, that's what we'd be proposing as well, just so cats can go through the cat door from the inside to outside and have a place to go outside. And then, you know, visitors that come that want to adopt can play with them in there and that habitat as well as the inside as well.
How tall will the enclosure be?
They're probably maybe, maybe nine feet tall.
Covered as well or open?
Covered, yes. Same, same link, you know, chain link type material as the sides would be the top. The two that are proposed, or three that are proposed on the, on the rear side of the structure, again, they're facing the south tree line. No one's ever going to see them. I mean, the interesting thing about the building here, when you, when you look at it in its expanse, it's 81 feet long. When you look at it from the road, it's about 32 feet long because the existing building is screening the portion that slides behind the existing. So you really only see, I was counting during the meeting, from about here to the wall, that's the only portion of exposure you're going to see. It's a little deceiving.
Thanks. I was intrigued when I saw caddy. I kind of had an idea what it was. Yeah. Thank you.
Wes, any comments?
So one of my comments was addressed. It sounds like the light, the proposed light fixtures, the new ones, they'll be mounted at about four feet? Said 42 inch bollards, maybe?
Yeah, can I, can I pass this around? This is a.
That was in our materials.
Oh, is it? So that's a little different than.
Yeah, the original one that we sent, we were looking for new pole lights, but then when we found them, couldn't find that style.
Okay, so these aren't, these aren't part of the project? Understood.
For wayfinding.
Yep.
As the shelter, typical hours close at five o'clock, they may perform some, some after hours surgeries now that we have the opportunity to do that in the existing facility. We do not. Again, it's people leaving at the end of the day that get to the parking lot. So the parking lot is lit. It's just getting through the sidewalk.
Perfect.
Fair minimal.
Yeah, the other comments were, were kind of technical in nature regarding erosion control and roof drainage. So let's see, provide information regarding the discharge of roof drainage. Elevation drawings appear to indicate roof gutters and downspouts, though discharge locations don't seem to be indicated on the plan set. So I think that's just going to be a matter of, oh, maybe he's got them there.
When we, when we provided the plans, we weren't that far along. We are now.
Gotcha.
I know it's hard to see, but there's, there's three green locations on each side of the building. Those are the downspout locations.
Okay.
What we're proposing is something like.
Yeah, I need to stay in front of the microphone so Lisa can get your voice.
Something like the attached where we have a dry stone bed or a rain barrel to catch and release slowly at the, at the corner locations would help us transition from, from just dumping the water out on a splash block. We prefer to do a dry, dry bed like this or again, a rain barrel that we can maybe use to water the gardens or disperse slowly. So.
Yeah, okay. That's perfect. So I think, I think they'll adjust our comments, you know, nothing too significant from Lobella.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question on the dark sky compliant issue. Do we issue a waiver then if we're willing to accept the existing lights as they've proposed?
The existing lights?
How do we, how do we handle?
I don't, so I don't think the dark sky compliant comes into comply, or I'm sorry. The full cutoff fixtures requirement would come into play if they were changing, changing out the existing fixtures, right? So my understanding is that you're going to leave those?
Correct. We're going to leave from the road. Everything back to the, to the building. The poles are going to remain as is.
Yeah.
What about, do you have any lighting on the sides of the building for, you know?
The only, the only light might be a recessed light above the front entry door.
Okay, so it would be full cutoff.
Full cutoff. Yeah, not a pendant hanging down or low or anything.
I wasn't sure what the board's take on it was. I know we've had applications in the past where we've asked the applicant to take their lights and make them dark sky compliant, but I think I get a sense here that that's not the case and we can let them proceed with their existing. And I didn't know if that required some sort of a waiver or if it's simply our approval.
That's a very, so you're right. I think there have been instances in the past where the planning board has requested, since they were changing some of the lights, would you go ahead and change more of them to make them more dark sky compliant?
With building additions, for instance. When we have wall packs that are outwardly looking, they're not full cutoff and you're putting an addition on or another structure, we ask for those brighter wall packs to be replaced with full cutoffs downward on the sides of the buildings. This summer, we asked for full cutoff LED lights and, and they've been slowly.
They've been doing it.
Replacing every one of them. So I think that was long-term their plan anyway for energy purposes, but they're a whole lot better than the old ones. So.
Yes, they are.
This is way off of Route 251. It's, it's way back. It's probably not going to be seen by hardly anyone.
These are more like residential driveway lighting fixtures, I think, going into your site.
I'm okay with the proposal. I just didn't know how we weaved it into our resolution.
More commercial development when they're doing this kind of thing, parking lot changes and stuff. Yeah, we've always asked for.
I can double check with the town's code enforcement office, but I don't believe they're going to need a specific waiver in the resolution, but I can double check.
Okay.
Yeah. Good question.
I mean, I'm okay with the proposal to use existing.
Al, did I ask you?
You did. Yeah, might write by us.
Yep.
I'm all set.
Okay.
Sounds like we're ready for an approval.
We need county input.
Yeah, so this is about, this is not only the site plan, but also a special use permit application.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah, so, and both of which had to be referred to the county for G M L 239M review. And these ones are not exempt from county review. So we didn't prepare a resolution for tonight.
We figure. County meet?
Tomorrow.
So you'll have it for the next meeting, it sounds like.
Perfect timing. Yeah. Okay.
Well, you have to enjoy your Thanksgiving and then come back.
Anybody from the audience have any questions or comments? I guess we'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
Al Moose?
Al Moose.
Al second.
Joe seconds. That's Joe, Logan. Call in favor.
Hi.
Hi. Hearing is closed.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Last but not least, second to last actually, because of that resolution.
Peter's got to come back.
Yeah, he has to come back.
Good evening.
Let me just put it on the record. This is application 039-SP 2021. The applicant's name is Abram Watson. I assume that's you.
Correct.
The project location, it says Dryer Road. There's no address number on it, but.
It's, yeah, it's Dryer Road, north side of Dryer Road, right near Malone Road, right near the Malone Road intersection. So it's right next to 7750 Dryer Road.
Applicant is requesting approval to construct a 2,000 square foot pole barn for personal storage. Oh, and a waiver from the town of Victor Design and Construction Standards to allow a driveway with a 13% slope, whereas a maximum of 10% is allowed. Okay.
Correct. Good evening. Thanks for including us on the agenda tonight. I appreciate it. So my name's Abram Watson. We, my wife Denise Watson is here as well. We purchased this lot just about a year ago and are looking forward to building our home there, moving around the corner from, we live in Mendon right now. And we love the area. Very excited to be here. The lot's about 200 feet wide and it's quite deep. It's on average about 700 feet deep. So we, we have developed this site plan and there's a, there's a natural high spot on the lot where we've positioned the buildings, which there was actually a site plan approved by the town in the late 70s that had a house in a similar area. So we're here to request your approval of the accessory structure, which is in excess of 1,000 square feet. We actually expect it to be 1,700 square feet, not, not the full 2,000 that we originally estimated. And the original drawing on the top, we had the driveway. As you can see, the driveway comes in and curves a bit from west to east and then comes up to meet the house and the accessory structure. The feedback on site distance suggested, recommended that we move the driveway to the east because there's a rise in the road to the west of this point. So we then changed the site plan to move the driveway further to the east to increase the site distance as much as possible for safety for cars coming from the west. So the, with that change of the driveway location, it then, that we found a spot on the driveway that exceeded the 10% maximum grade. So it's actually 13% in a particular spot. So that's why we had to come back and add the second request in there for approval. So. Let's see. So we've, we got the feedback from the conservation board, the highway superintendent, and we just, just recently got the feedback from Lobella. And we've got, if I can just talk about those for a second, the, the points. We shared all this with our site engineer on the Lobella comments. He has come back quickly and said, "We can add these notes in on the plan." The site plan has required regarding stabilization of erosion control. I think we have to fill out a SW PPP form. We didn't, weren't, didn't realize until just now we had to do that. So we can follow up with that for sure. The feedback from the highway department was to reposition the driveway as shown on the lower proposed site plan. The last, but then we've also got the, the correspondence from our neighbors to the east regarding the location of the driveway and concerns about the stability of their historical house. So we obviously just want to make sure we're, we know exactly what to do to avoid any damage to their structure, to the house and achieve either that location of driveway or anything that we need to modify based on your all's reviews. Not sure what else.
Bet Huber is here.
Oh, yeah, and the historian has had some comments as well.
Did you get?
I did get your letter. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it.
Was it in the packet? Okay. Bet Huber, town historian. So I'm, I'll answer any questions unless you want me to read my recommendations that I got from the Landmark Society and Barrow Architectures. Shall I read it? Okay. It's come to my attention, and first of all, I want to say that the Watsons, I mean, none of this is their fault. They just happen to have, you wanting to build a house in a driveway next to a historic cobblestone. And unfortunately, because Mark Years suggested, recommended that they move the driveway, it's now a lot closer to the cobblestone than it was before. So it's come to my attention that the construction of a driveway on Dryer Road by applicants, Mr. and Mrs. Watson, will be about 60 feet from the westernmost corner of a cobblestone house owned by Cheryl and Bill Baldwin. My concern is the amount of vibration.
Are these the Baldwins over here?
Yes.
Thank you.
My concern is the amount of vibration of the construction of this driveway would cause to the fragile and very old mortar which holds the house together. So after consulting with the Landmark Society and John Page of Barrow Architecture, I have the following recommendations. Keep heavy equipment, bulk excavators, backhoes, rams. I learned a lot of information this week. Large concrete trucks and large haul trucks as far as practical from the common property line during construction. Limit the use of hoe rams and the largest backhoes for excavation to the greatest extent possible. If hoe rams are required for rock removal, the town should be notified ahead of time. Put boundary markers along the property line to ensure that no equipment accidentally drives closer to the cobblestone than necessary. Request that the existing cobblestone be photographed prior to the start of construction and evaluated during the construction to check for any obvious mortar cracks. This could be done by the cobblestone homeowners, the builder and/or the town. Require the builder be aware of this store cobblestone home and the delicate nature of its construction as well as any recommendations made by the planning board. as well as any recommendations made by the planning board to keep it safe. Again, I say the Watsons didn't want the driveway in this particular location, and it was moved because of a recommendation by highway superintendent Mark Years. They've been very supportive of the sensitivity of the cobblestone historic construction, and they've spoken to the Baldwins to understand and appreciate their concerns. So do we have questions?
So, Babat.
You're going to say something technical, aren't you?
I'll try not to. There's no way to avoid any of that equipment being any further away or closer to the cobblestone than exactly where they're showing the driveway, because they're showing the temporarily stabilized construction entrance right where the driveway's going. So I don't know if there's rock there. I don't know if there's soil borings on the site, but you won't have all that ho ram. Is there rock?
No, then we, if you can see where the.
Gwinch, come up here.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
If you can see where the proposed septic area is, right near there. We dig, we did the six-foot deep hole for that, and as farther you went, the more sand you got. So I would be shocked if we encountered rock there or even at, at the house site, you know, just given the soil.
The history of wells and contamination out there are pretty well documented and how deep the rock is and stuff. So that's why I said, I was trying to point out that you won't see any of that type of construction work, ho rams and things like that, but
Right.
you'll still get heavy equipment driving in and out. Concrete trucks aren't going to be any further away than, you know, dump trucks or graders or anything, so.
You know, it, it's just a, an unfortunate situation, and we're trying to do the best that we can for the cobblestone, as well as the Watsons who had to move the driveway.
Yeah. Well, the one thing I would agree with is monitoring the house for vibrations. And so I think that, that, you know, ground, ground vibrations measured at the property line would be a good thing for the duration. They can do that with an instrument setup that can monitor it remotely or, you know, it'll self-record during the time of construction.
That would be up to the.
The builder.
Builder.
Yeah, but.
You have a builder?
Yes, we have.
I would, I would say that, that monitoring and reporting should be done by the builder and then reported to the town code enforcement.
Your builder.
Dean French.
Yeah, he's an excellent builder. He did an addition for us.
So he would be aware of the sensitivity of this.
He may or may not be aware of the sensitivity unless it's.
Well, if we presented these parameters.
I think if we got some guidance on what the, I think it'd be useful to get.
I don't know if there's a, you know, from the engineering perspective, what the limits, acceptable limits of vibration are. We certainly can say we will not use any vibrating compaction equipment or anything like that on the driveway.
After.
Yeah, exactly. So to avoid anything like that, but if it's a monitored situation, you know, as long as we know the thresholds.
If, if you get certain vibrations from certain pieces of equipment that are too close, I mean, I could imagine it's right in the area of where the construction entrance is because the house is fairly close to the road that cobblestone is.
Right.
So anything within that range from the road back, the same distance back from the house, you'll get trucks going back and forth. So monitoring it would be important to know what the vibrations are during construction. And if it's too much vibration or you start seeing some damage and you got to lighten up the equipment, I guess, lighter, you know, two axle instead of three axle dumps, that sort of thing. And maybe Wes could chime in on that too and offer some advice. And I see Mrs. Watson with a question.
Going to sit down?
You can step up.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Cheryl Baldwin, my husband Bill.
Sorry, Mrs. Baldwin.
We live at 7728 Dryer Road, right next to the lot that is being considered for that home. Is there any way that you could move the driveway, which seems like it would be the most simple result to this problem?
Why did Mark want it moved?
Original proposed location, the site distance was.
You need to step up to the mic, sorry.
On the original proposed driveway location, the site distance was less than 300 feet to the high, high spot on the road to the west. So the lot's only 200 feet wide. It's, we don't have a lot to work with, so.
Baldwin's house is even further, further west, isn't it?
No, it's further east.
It's further east, so. So they, they would be probably just over the site distance requirement. I think site distance, like, for that speed is 400 feet or something. I can't remember the number exactly. So we gained another, you know, 100 feet by moving it over. There's also a fire hydrant there, so we're, it could be moved, I believe, you know, a bit. It's a matter of how much is, how much is helpful, is another five or 10 feet helpful? And then how close could we be to the hydrant and everybody's still comfortable? You know, we're not, I think we're flexible in that regard. We're, really, it's, it became a lesser of evils type of.
I wonder if they had a temporary construction entrance to the west of the hydrant that would then be graded back in at the, at the end for the new driveway entrance, if you know what I mean.
Okay. If that would be, take the traffic.
I'm just saying, if you monitor it, and this is me thinking out loud, but if you monitor it and all of a sudden it's a problem, then you might have to, you know, put in some additional gravel east or west of the hydrant that come in. That might be a solution offered by the builder.
Sure.
And, and I'm sure that Dean will find an earthwork contractor to do that work, not him directly. He does the building construction, so.
Right, right, right.
Now, Wes, do you have anything to offer on that?
I had another concern. We've lived there going on 20 years, and there's been nothing done to that lot since we've lived there, except the town has mowed around the fire hydrant. And that has caused a growth of trees and et cetera. And I don't see how they're not going to get away with doing anything but actually clearing the lot, which will require heavy machinery with excavation. And I see that as a problem also.
How much clearing do you plan on doing?
Well, we have to take out, we do have to take out trees in the area of the buildings. So there's, we're going to excavate about three or four feet from that high spot down to create a level area for those buildings. There's, there are some very large box elder trees right on that top of that hill. Some of them have already helped us by half falling down already. So there definitely is tree removal in the area. But our intent is to actually minimize the tree removal to the area of the buildings, keep as much as possible of the trees from the road as you go into the property to keep the wooded setting of the space and behind the property, behind, sorry, to the north, the rear of the lot, if you like. We don't expect to clear any, anything past where the structures are. So, but obviously, it's a wooded lot, so there's some degree of tree clearing that has to be done.
Is any of it suitable for anything, the wood?
That's box elder and honey locust, so not, not the greatest, but.
Well, is there anybody that would like, come in and take it down and take it away?
Possibly. I'm not sure. I could, I've put in a couple of calls early on to see if people were interested in that wood, but I didn't get any responses back. But we can continue the search.
We have had some.
If you're going to speak, you have to come up here and identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Denise Watson. I'm just going to add that we have had some of people with the Boy Scout organization already come, and we've donated wood. So to the extent that they will take that, we will try to get it in their hands if they're interested in that type. So that's what we've been doing so far on a few things that have fallen over.
And we have a box elder that's slowly going like this.
Yeah.
I forgot to say something. We have a couple of beautiful maple trees, large maple trees. And I'm worried about the root structure. That was excavating the property for, for the trees and whatnot. I'm sure they won't want stumps left in their property, and they'll be removed, which could disturb the, the root structure of our maple trees and.
How far are they from the property line?
They're about four feet. The biggest tree, it's, it's got a four-foot trunk on it. And it's very tall. And it's about four feet from the line. And we have had some trouble with things like this with another house we had.
Yeah, somebody built a house and disturbed the roots and a tree fell on our house.
If that driveway could be moved to the west 10 feet, that would make us much happier about that. So.
What do you think? And Mark, go along with 10 feet?
So my understanding is that Mark Years was concerned about the site distance there on Dryer Road. He reached out to Wade Daly at La Bella Associates, right? And Wade concurred with his findings and his concerns and felt that the initial location of the driveway was problematic and likely dangerous, which is why, obviously, as has been stated, why the driveway has been moved. What I can do is, is circle back with Wade and Mark to see whether, whether or not, you know, some minor adjustment in addition to what they've already done here would still be safe. Yeah.
We appreciate that. The area isn't safe. I mean, you, our driveway, they come over that hill so fast that, that's one of the problems, is that the speed limit needs to be reduced. And that would probably help the safety factor.
Well, that's, so that's, that's beyond this board's control.
Right, I know, just by state.
Yeah, exactly.
I think you're giving justification for the exact location of the driveway. It sounds like everyone agrees that it's not a good situation there, and the best thing to do is to put the driveway where we see it. Another thing that comes to my mind is, you know, what type of evidence do we have? For example, what is the proximity of the house to the driveway? And what is the nature of the soil? And what types of calculations have been done that shows that some sort of equipment going over here is going to cause some sort of damage? I think, you know, we deal on the board here with distances and measurements and all types of rules and regulations, but I can't think of one in my mind that addresses this particular issue. That being the case, I think we would rely on experts or someone to tell us that there's some sort of soil abnormality here that would create the condition that you're describing. But I think it's somewhat punitive to the neighbor who wants to build a house to hold them to these standards that you're choosing to try to employ without some type of scientific information or from a geotechnical engineer or someone like that.
That's an interesting opinion.
Solid opinion.
I don't like it, but it's an interesting opinion.
All right. So my only focus is on the vibrations of the machinery on the mortar.
Hey, so what, what is your information that says that there's some vibration on the driveway? What's, what's to tell us as a board that that's going to cause a problem?
It, it is exactly that, Scott. It is very subjective. You're right. It could happen, and it couldn't happen.
How far away is the house?
60 feet.
60 feet?
From the driveway.
From the driveway?
Yeah. I'm not saying it will happen. I wouldn't want to be in the house.
Well, we have a cobblestone foundation. It's, it's an old house, as you know.
Yeah.
And we had a large tree taken down, which was very close to the house.
Trunk like this.
And it didn't do any damage at all. And there was the taking of the tree down, there was the stump removal with a machine to do it. I don't know.
I'm just doing my job as historian, trying to be sure that the cobblestone mortar doesn't crack. I want these people to have their driveway, safe driveway, and I want the Baldwins to have no mortar cracks. So, and it's totally up to the board what you want to do.
Wes, you're going to touch base with?
So I can, I can touch base with Wade. I can also see we have a geotechnical engineer in our office. I could consult a bit with our geotechnical engineer, take a look at, you know, soils mapping, see what the existing conditions are, and maybe we can provide a little color to, you know, answer, you know, Scott had some great points, you know? I mean, to what degree do we know as a planning board that the work that's being proposed on this lot is going to impact the neighboring lot? I don't think we know.
I think we have limits to our abilities in this regard, is what I think.
Right. And actually, if you think about it, I mean, the proximity of the existing cobblestone to Dryer Road and the heavy trucks that drive on Dryer Road probably impose more potential damage than.
Yeah, it is very close. Just looking at Google Earth here.
That's a good point.
And we, with the Cobblestone Foundation, are very close to Modoc Road.
Okay.
Within 20 feet.
Oh, wow.
And it's been standing there from, since 1854.
I do have some sympathy for the concern over the large maple that's right along their fence line, near the property line. That canopy is very large, and it certainly will overhang the driveway. And when they built our house 25 years ago, they put fill in the ground uphill, turned out to be uphill from our maple, very beautiful maple with flowered, you know, built gorgeous color for 20 years, and then it just died. And it took that long for that fill to affect the maple tree. And it would, it killed it because the, half the root system was buried.
Yeah.
From the lot. So I get concerned about that.
Sure. The, the driveway location is 20 feet or more from the lot line, the edge of, the closest edge of the driveway.
Okay.
So I don't, I'm not a tree expert on that, but I mean, I believe that we, I'm not familiar with that tree in particular, but I think we could find that tree and control the grading done to the edge of the driveway around there. Certainly, you don't want to bury the tree with dirt.
So this is an example of what you're.
That's, yeah, exactly, exactly. Just a visual.
Yeah, I have no problem with the project, the house, the barn, everything else. I, the grade was the other concern, was the 13%. If you lowered the, the house foundation by three feet, you could probably stretch that out and get 10%. So that was my other comment.
About the grade?
13% grade.
On the drive.
Yeah, so I don't know, there's, I don't know really a way to get around, around that other than providing the waiver. I don't, I think we've, in past projects, I think the planning board has provided a waiver here and there for driveway grades that exceed the 10%.
We did one recently over there off of 251. Was it Lil?
Yes, yeah.
That's when I did one. One of the things that I notice about these slope issues is that if you've got a 13% slope that's terminating at the edge of pavement of Dryer Road, say, that's not a good thing. But in this particular situation, you have a relatively level area, and then it climbs from there or descends, depending on which direction you're going in. So my experience has been that you can get away with these sorts of situations because it's variable. You don't have a constant slope of 13%. It's broken up. And you also have a, a landing area, for lack of a better description. So I think it's justified personally.
Okay. I think it's a fairly small stretch that's the 13% too on the driveway, but, but technically it does meet that grade, right?
I'll go, I'll be the contrarian position on that one because that, the finished floor elevation on the garage is 74550. And that's, at that point, it's just, it's about a foot and a half above existing grade. And if you lowered the foundation of the house three feet, you can stretch out the driveway in that steep section to get it to closer to 10% and not have as much earthwork. And then you'd have a place to put the cut material from the house, foundation and garage where you're showing a lot of fill on the backside. You know, you're moving it out and to get the barn in place. And I don't know, it doesn't look like it's well-balanced, I guess.
That's more construction equipment up and down the driveway, Joe? To lower the foundation, right?
Well, you're up there digging the foundation. If you spread the material out. Well, you're up there digging the foundation. If you spread the material down...
Then they'll push all that extra dirt over by the maple tree and...
Well, they're not... it looks like they're bringing material in the way they've got it now. That's my point. You bring fill in or you spread it around, so.
Yeah, I know we're, I know we're taking about five feet off from the highest point, which is right in the center of the house.
Yeah, the top is 750. Your house finished floor elevation is 747.
So...
That's three feet. And then, but that's a really small little area. By the time you get to 747, you're out fairly far.
Okay. So maybe it should come down another foot or however. I don't know. I don't know how to do the soil calculations, but...
Honestly, it would just be a matter of figuring out the elevation you need to get the grade to 10%.
Might wanna check with Glenn, your engineer.
Right.
See what he has to say.
Yeah. Okay.
Are the conditions that the town historian's requesting a big burden on you in terms of constructing? Because the resolution that we would consider would have you address the town historian's concerns.
Yeah, I don't thi... the only one I'm not, I don't know exactly how to do would be the monitoring idea that was brought up. But as far as the keeping the equipment as far away from the line as possible, putting up, you know, putting up stakes or something to make sure nobody goes accidentally close, all those...
Well, they can't because there's a fence there.
There's actually a fence there as well, so...
They can't go over towards the property. The fence line, I think the fence line is...
Thank you. I just have a hard time hearing when you're that far for the minutes.
I apologize. I think the fence line to their home is a little over the 60 feet. So I think we can do the stakes certainly, but there's already a fence there that would serve that purpose.
We can extend, any farther than that, we can do stakes past the fence or whatever is required.
I guess what I'm getting at is if we were complying with, or acceding to the recommendations from Babette, that's, it's not a big burden for you all to do that to move forward, right?
No, no.
I mean, you'll find out pretty quickly when they monitor it for a week or two with construction equipment going in and out, whether it's even significant vibration.
Right.
And if it's not, you shouldn't be good, you know, for the balance of...
Good point.
And I'm a retired safety person, so the speed of the vehicles, if there is gonna be vibration based on the soil conditions, speed is also a factor up and down the driveway.
So limit the speeds, yeah. That's good.
Okay. All right. You'll be back, and we'll have a summary response from...
La Bella.
La Bella.
You might wanna, when you come back, if you have perhaps a statement from Glenn, your engineer, on how he did the grading and why he did it the way that he did it, I think that might be helpful.
Okay.
So just to be clear, what are the actions that we would be coming back on? One is the, can we avoid the 13% by lowering?
By lowering the house three feet or whatever it might take.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's gonna require them to export soil off the property or whether it actually avoids importing soil by lowering it down and balancing the excavation with the fill. Because it, it looks like there's a lot of fill that, that is put in in order to accommodate the barn. So if Glenn can take a look at that, just to see what it would take to lower it. And it's always nice to have your highs as high as possible, but I don't... in this case, you have such a small little knob of soil that will spread out the more you flatten it, a wider, more level area, and you get the bonus of having not so steep of a driveway, which can be a challenge in the winter around here.
Right.
Okay. Okay. That, in terms of the barn or the accessory building being approximately 1,700 feet, is there, pardon me?
Square feet.
Square feet, yeah. Is there any issue with that?
No, I don't think there's an...
It doesn't need to dug the foundation. It's just gonna sit on a slab.
Whole barn, I think, right?
Right.
It's whole barn.
Wouldn't be a problem.
Good. I mean, it's got a concrete slab inside, right? You just, it's just...
Yeah, I mean, we're...
Whole barn, meaning it's...
That's our, yeah, our intent. I mean, if it did require a foundation for sticks, would that, what would the... if it did require a foundation, would that matter for this?
No, I thought your question was about excavation.
Oh, no, it was the square footage.
Right. Which is what drove the original review board.
If it's 1,000 feet or more, then you need any board approval.
Right.
Still get, if we push this through eventually, right? I mean, that'll have to be included in our resolution and get the approval of that.
Okay. So we're set for what we're looking for for the next meeting?
As long as they know what they need to do. Did you get your question answered?
So is there anything other than the grading statement and possibility of lowering the house to...
Yeah. And Wes is tasked with asking his geotechnical engineer in the house about the vibrations.
Okay.
Requirements, whether it's advised or not, or whether we anticipate anything? And what was the other thing you were having Wade look at?
Potential refinement of the driveway location.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything?
Yeah.
I think on that, it would not, I mean, if it stays on the east side of the fire hydrant, then we only, you know, by ourselves, maybe 10 feet or so, which is...
Fire hydrant is controlling out there.
Pardon me?
Fire hydrant is controlling the location of that driveway there.
Yes, sir. It's certainly influencing it.
It seems to be splitting the difference between the utility pole and the fire hydrant. And so if you shaded towards the fire hydrant a little bit more, you'd avoid the tree, the beautiful maple that they have, the large one right at the property line, a little bit better, but...
Well, we would still like to come up. I mean, it would change the entrance, but we would still, from our design, like to come up the right hand side.
Come up to the same place at the top. It's just it might have a little bit of a swerve to it.
Exactly. It could have a little curve at the bottom.
Hmm.
Can I take the speak-out turn?
Wes, do you have a resolution for Peter?
Yes.
Oh.
Or Wendy's, yes.
Okay.
That's all we're gonna do tonight.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We'll see you next time. You gonna read it, or you want me to read it?
Yeah, I'll read it since it's on my computer. It's gonna be up here on this, on the screen. So you might wanna, you might have to work with me on some of the wording or technicalities or clerical items in terms of numbering if I skipped a number or something. But so here's what we've got. Based on, based on the testimony given tonight and the findings of, you know, consulted comments and that sort of thing. So as well as the planning board made the following findings of fact, a minor subdivision application was received on October 5, 2021 by the Secretary of the Planning Board from FX Net Lease Holdings LLC for a minor subdivision entitled Wendy's Restaurant Subdivision. Is the intent of the applicant to subdivide a 5.69 acre parcel into two lots. Lot RB1 would be 1.76 acres to contain the existing Wendy's Restaurant, and Lot RB2 would be 3.87 acres. An under-review sign was posted on the project parcel as required by Town Code. A public hearing was duly called for and was published in the Messenger Post, and whereby all property owners within a minimum of 500 feet of the project parcel were notified by U.S. Mail. The planning board held a public hearing on November 9, 2021, at which time the public was permitted to speak on the application. The application was deemed to be an unlisted action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act regulations, and a short EAF was prepared. The planning board as lead agency found that, that there would be no significant impacts to the environment as a result of the action, and directed that a NECD be prepared. La Bella Associates reviewed the preliminary, I should, I should say, reviewed the minor subdivision and made comments in a letter dated November 5, 2021. Code enforcement reviewed the subdivision application on October 21, 2021, and provided comments. Although town staff referred the application to the Ontario County Planning Board pursuant to regulations found in Section 239 N of general municipal law, the Ontario County Planning Board has established an intermunicipal agreement whereby there are a list of referrals that are exempt from review, as noted in Appendix B, list of referrals eliminated from the county planning board review processes, process, including number 11, which states subdivision of land into two lots that meet all applicable local municipal code requirements. Whereas the Town of Victor Planning Board reviewed the unlisted action on November 9, 2021, and identified no significant impacts, now therefore be it resolved that the project Wendy's Restaurant Subdivision will not have a significant impact on the environment and that a NECD be prepared, and be it further resolved that the minor subdivision application of FX Lease Holdings LLC Minor Subdivision entitled Wendy's Restaurant Subdivision drawn by BME Associates dated October 2021, received by the planning board October 5, 2021, Planning Board Application Number 4 MS 2021 be approved with the following conditions. The conditions to be met prior to the chairman signing the minor subdivision plans. That no final signatures be given on the plan until all legal and engineering fees have been paid. As for fee reimbursement local law adopted November 25, 1996. That Section 4 standard approval conditions for all subdivisions, major and minor of the town design and construction standards be met. Three, that comments in a letter dated November 5, 2021, from La Bella Associates be addressed. Four, that comments from the Town of Victor Code Enforcement Officer dated October 21, 2021, be addressed. And then conditions that are ongoing, standard conditions that must be adhered to, that the major subdivision, minor subdivision comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards, including Section 4. I'll have to double-check how applicable that is. And number two, the approved subdivision plan be provided to the town in digital CAD format per Town Board Resolution 193 of June 23, 2003, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary forward a copy of this resolution to the applicant.
Hold on a server.
Aye.
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 You want a motion for approval?
Yeah, move it.
I'll move it.
Okay, let's move.
I'll second it.
Scott seconds, and everybody said yes.
Yes. Good job, Wes.
Now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Nice to see you, Peter.
Yeah, it's nice seeing everybody. Thank you, Wes, for accommodating.